We're reconvening our meetings from closed session to open session at this point. What I'd like to do is have someone volunteer for pledge of allegiance and we'll go to the next step. Thank you.
I'll do it. Sure. All right. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, what I'd like to do now is we're going to adopt the agenda. Who's going to speak to that?
Do I adopt the agenda?
There's a motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a correction in the agenda.
Please do.
On consent items eight, two A, Travis Dozier on his assigned date. It was supposed to read eight twelve two thousand fifteen and it was supposed to, it should read eight seventeen two thousand fifteen.
Okay.
Do you want to talk the agenda with me?
With you, ma'am. There's a section on, second on the item. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. No action. I report to, the report on action, if there was any action taken in closed session, there was no action taken. Okay? Okay. Thank you very much. We're going into the public hearing. The public hearing would be the efficiency of expressional material compliance. Okay? Do I have anyone speaking on behalf of the item itself? Public hearing. Okay. So, I don't hear any, I don't see any, and we're going to close the public hearing at this point. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item would be, is the communication presentation. I'm going to switch that over to our favorite superintendent.
The only one.
So, we have some acknowledgements tonight. I'm going to ask the board if we can all stand up.
I was slipping right behind you.
I'm going to ask Mrs. Barrera, are you here tonight? Okay. I'll start with Roosevelt. So, it is with great pleasure tonight that we are happy to come up and give our donors acknowledgements for your great contributions to our schools. In this particular case, we have received over twenty-one hundred backpacks from our many donors in our communities. So, let's hear it. Today, we have two items that they're, all our donors will receive. They are going to receive a certificate of appreciation from our district. And so, I'm going to hand this over to the principals and then she'll read it in a second and call you up. And also, we're going to receive a certificate from our state assembly for your donation and our contribution to our schools. We greatly appreciate this. So, Mrs. Barrera, say a few words to Rita.
So, last year, as my first year at principal at Roosevelt, we began a partnership with First Presbyterian Church who decided to adopt the school. And so, leading that project, three projects so far in the year is Rita Harvey from First Presbyterian Church. So, Rita, if you can join us right now. I'll read it. Certificate of Appreciation. Salinas City Elementary School District hereby awards the certificate to First Presbyterian Church for making a difference at Roosevelt Elementary School for your generous donation of backpacks with school supplies distributed to every second and fourth grade student. And they also gave each child a polo shirt, which is part of the school uniform. So, Rita?
And Rita, we would love to shake your hand if you come down this little reading line here. Sorry. It's struggling.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next is Katie Castagna. And she's going to talk about her donor who is new here. Is Mr. Johansson here? Do you want to wait and see if he comes? They're scheduled to be here, so.
They were scheduled to be here. Let me hold on for just a moment.
Okay. We'll wait. We'll see. We have, we have two donors that are not here this evening, I don't think. Taylor Farms called this afternoon and wasn't able to come. They also donated backpacks to Los Padres and to Roosevelt. And then, we have Costco who also donated, I think, over four hundred backpacks to Beronda Meadows. So, let's give them a big. I just heard, we have Taylor Farms in the house? May I call up Ms. Rominez and Ms. Barrera back up? You can come and more Taylor Farms together.
I was making a note to see who wasn't here.
On behalf of Los Padres Elementary School, you've been donating to all our first graders for so many years. We do appreciate everything that you do for them. They are very excited and using their backpacks, especially since we're a all uniformed school and backpacks are part of the uniform. So, we do appreciate everything that you do for us. Thank you so much.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to do it. I can tell you that much. The entire employees just get smiles.
Yes, it's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Glad to do it. Keep doing it.
And of course, on behalf of Roosevelt, who you also donated backpacks to all of our first graders filled with supplies. We appreciate it. And so, now kids have a little extra at home to do their homework. Thank you.
Thank you so much. How did you do it?
Thank you, Salinas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Who was, who was not here? Tell me the number.
Cheryl, you want to come up to the podium? We're going to give you, I think, one by one. Let's see which one shows up first. One, two, three.
Good evening, everyone. Shoreline Community Church, which is on Gordon, Gordon Road in Monterey, kind of right by the airport, has supported us year after year in a variety of different efforts of outreaches and the homeless kids' Christmas party that's put on for about five hundred of our families every year, as well as backpacks. And anytime we need anything, they've always been there with their ten different homeless ministries as outreach. So, Deb Federico is here. She's the Director of Community Outreach. And she and Rita and other Directors of the Community Outreach from different faith communities know each other very well. So, we'd like to present you with this beautiful plaque. Okay? And it's your certificate of appreciation from Salinas City Elementary School District. Family Research Center hereby awards the certificate to you, Shoreline Community Church, for making a huge difference in the lives of so many homeless kids as a result of the Stuff the Bus Campaign. Actually, it's not, this is not correct, but we'll fix it. That's United Way. But anyway, Stuff the Backpack. And from California Senate's Office, this is a certificate of recognition also.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We're very. Thank you. Deb, thank you. I have to ask you something. Katie, come on up. So, this is Katie Castagna. She is the President and CEO of the United Winnebago County. So, we'd like to welcome her as the chief and also, this was her first time as far as the main leader for the Stuff the Bus Campaign, which is all over Monterey County. So, with that said, for the last, I don't know, it's been four or five years that we've received hundreds and hundreds of stuffed backpacks that go to our homeless children. And one year, we even had my horse trailer out front here. I don't know if some of you remember that. We had no way to get them over to the FRC, so I said, "Oh, just bring our horse trailer and we'll stuff them in the horse trailer and then bring them on over to the Family Research Center." So, that was kind of funny. But Katie, we just want to thank you again, like many other organizations. And we really appreciate everybody in the community and especially United Way for supporting our homeless children in a variety of different ways, but one is through Stuff the Bus Campaign. And by them having, to all of you actually, a backpack to start the school year, or when they come new to the district, or they've lost everything in their storage and they can't come to school in a uniform or have school supplies or backpacks, those backpacks mean the world of difference for them, especially when they come in and they say, "Mom, I'm going to get my own backpack." And I'm thinking, wow, that's pretty humbling when it means that much to them to get a new backpack. So, it's pretty wonderful. So, thank you very, very much. And it's also from the State of California Senate Office. And thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity.
Congratulations both.
So, President Kevin McWilliams could please come to the front, actually, Dr. Kevin McWilliams, come to the front. He's one of our local renowned dentists in the area. So, Kevin is the President of Santa, Salinas Rotary Santa Lucia Club, which is kind of at Georgia's where everybody meets. And this particular school year, they wanted to adopt Sherwood School in a couple of different ways. One is they wanted to find all the homeless kids that were identified last school year and provide them with a solid black stuffed backpack with also a nice little game in there for them to play. And the Rotary Club came over and did the actual, not only stuffing, but they did the distribution as well to all the different children. So, the parents are appreciative, the kids are appreciative, and plus, it was uniform colored. So, we wanted to present this to you, a certificate of appreciation for the Santa Lucia Club.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, as well as the certificate from the Senate Office.
Thank you.
You are welcome. And then, one other thing that we just met today is we have the Alice South Club, Alice South Rotary Club, and the Santa Lucia Club wrote a collaborative grant in which they're going to continue with the LEA plan of Sherwood in their attendance, their uniforms, tardies, and increasing their reading scores by providing all the incentives on a weekly, monthly, trimester basis to help these, help the administrators and the teachers give the incentive to the children to achieve these goals through PBIS positive, you know, behavior reinforcement. So, we met on that today, came up with a variety of different strategies with their administration, and we got the green light on that. So, we're very excited on that. And they're going to support that particular school all year long. So, thank you very much for that.
Are you going to ask representative from Wheeler's Carpets in the house? Okay, well, let's hear it for Wheeler. You want to talk a little bit about?
I do, if I may.
I was really hoping that Mr. Wheeler or representative from Wheeler's Carpets could be here today. It was a really special project. Mr. Wheeler came to us. He's actually a Loma Vista alumni, as are some of his family members, and he wanted to do something for all of our students. And we put our heads together. He came up with the idea of the backpacks and having tools for students to be able to do their homework. And I didn't want to seem greedy, so I put together two lists. I put together the really should have list and the, if you can, if you can afford five hundred and sixty of these lists. And when he and his team showed up on the first day of school with five hundred and sixty backpacks filled with every possible thing we had on that list, it was, it was an amazing gift for all of our kids. And I had that small fear because not all big kids seem really grateful when they get a gift. But the very first classroom we went into, the students just, they lit up in a, in a real way, and it was really special. So, I was hoping he could take back our warm thanks to someone, but I'll make sure I do that on my own. But thank you. Thank you for thanking him here publicly.
This is Goncetta. I know that Costco's not here tonight, but would you like to say just a few words on their behalf?
Good evening, Superintendent, Board Members. And yes, I would like to thank Costco. They donated a total of four hundred and fifty backpacks to our first through fourth grade students. They were delighted as well to have received the backpacks. We were very, very fortunate to have been selected at these schools. They are our neighbors, so I said, "I'm hoping that next year you can live there once again." So, we've established that partnership. And like the students at the other schools, our students, our children were very happy, very excited, and very thankful. So, thank you to Costco.
Yeah, well, we're going to, I'll make sure I get delivery to them. We are very, very grateful to our donors. This is just one of many donations that we see throughout the year, but because it was a collective effort across many of our schools, we felt it was a great time to bring you to our board meeting and to celebrate your recognition for the great contributions you're making to our students. Thank you. So, again, we hear a big. We're showing a little bit of the clips with the backpacks. It's just a minute long, and then we'll go into our next recognition. Thank you.
We are so thankful that First Presbyterian adopted us last year. According to the Coast Weekly, we are number two with the highest poverty rate of students here at Roosevelt. And so, we are just very lucky that we are working with First Presbyterian and have established a strong partnership. And so, on behalf of our staff and our students, we thank you for today's backpacks and polo shirt event.
We have two more recognitions that we'd like to do tonight. So, I would like to call up Virginia Garza Nunez to the podium, please. And we would like to recognize her and her assistants, Paula Wallen, Paula Wallen. She is not able to be here tonight, but Virginia. On behalf of the California Department of Ed, you were awarded to local educational agencies, that means districts, that met the initial CalPads certification deadline for all six data collections, both in, that's an entire year. And let me just tell you, one student can be, I don't know, how many cells of information on a data sheet. So, this is really not an easy feat when you have almost 10,000 kids that you're entering all this information on. But, and you were able to resolve any anomalies to achieve the anomaly rate of less than two percent in our enrollment, and that you maintained the quality needed for keep us, number one, as a district, and our student information system in CalPads extremely accurate. This is from the State Department, and so, we wanted to award you. Virginia, you also have an award from our state assembly office. So, I'll let you take this and call us.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. This is a great time, as we're taking our seats, for you to just not have to stay here for the entire meeting. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have, you don't feel obligated.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Carol Rodriguez, President of Salinas Elementary Teachers Council. I wanted to bring a comment to the district that I'm hearing more about, and it's the problem of combination classes in the district. We set a precedent several years ago that teachers should not be teaching more students than for which they are being paid. This was done not just because teachers should be paid for their work, but also knowing that this benefited our students. We worked with the district on that, this issue, in the best interest of teachers and students. But at this time, I've learned that at one site, we have a teacher who, for about an hour or so of math instruction, has fifteen students, while the students from the other grade that she's teaching are going to other, to other classes, making their classes overloaded at about, at over thirty-six students each. At another site, the principal overloaded a couple of other classes to accommodate the combination class at the site. The students that were put into the overloaded classes were, these are words from an email, the lowest readers and the lowest English language learners. So, not only were they loaded with more students, but they were given some of the more difficult students. Today, I learned of another site which teachers are at odds over the same type of issues, issue. If the extra students are there for only part of the day, teachers don't get paid for any of the extra work. And it's not just being in the classroom with that many more students every day, which takes a toll on teachers because it means more management issues, it means, you know, trying to organize more students, some of whom you don't know that well, those kinds of things. But there's also extra work like running off materials, grading, reports, all those kinds of things. And the other thing, though, is that the, these difficulties start to cause problems between teachers, teachers at the sites involved, and also between sites, difficulties in what's going on at one site and not going on at another site, and so forth. SECPC is asking that the district can discontinue the practice of having extra students in classes for parts of the day. This is a practice which we feel is detrimental to both teachers and to the site climate, but also, in the long run, we feel as if it's not in the best interest of our students. It's not an educationally sound practice. Students don't get the attention they need and deserve from their teachers because there's so many more students. And, you know, the state has now, we had class size reduction for many years, then it kind of went by the wayside a bit because of the recession, but now it's coming back. So, the state acknowledges that smaller class sizes do help, but in this district, we have, there will be classes with over thirty-six kids for over an hour. And we just ask that that stop. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? We have the superintendent right now. I don't see the CCA. CCA is not present. Okay. Then, superintendent. We have the floor.
Well, I would just like to say that I was glad that last week, we completed our last batch of school nights. So, all of our schools have had batch of school night, and it's been really just a joy to attend all the batch of school nights. I was able to make thirteen out of fourteen schools, and that was simply because four schools had them on the same night. It was literally impossible to get to all four schools across town through traffic jams and everything else. But it was a joy to go into the teachers' classrooms, to see the different ways that teachers approach back to school. Some of you joined your grade levels together, others did individuals. Lots of innovation among use of technology for some teachers, and just the presence of the students and the parents that were there, really excited about what our classrooms and our schools have to offer. So, that's pretty much my, my comment is yay, eighteen batch of school nights behind me. That's good.
How many miles did you walk?
Oh, you know what? One night, yeah, the night that we had the four batch of school nights, I think I clocked in two point five miles, so, on my Fitbit, right? I can keep track of that.
For each school that you visited?
No.
Board members? Do we have board members? Linking?
I do.
Yes, sir.
I would like to say, I got an invitation to the USL Music Festival next month. I was looking forward to that, but I will, I won't be able to be there. I'm going to be out of the country, and I'm sorry, I'll miss some activities. But I wanted to say, I'm looking forward to the time when the district can afford to have enough music teachers to teach instrumental music as well as vocal music. I know when some of the people sitting out there were in school, we had vocal music teachers and we had instrumental music teachers. We, in every school, every school had a band. Anyway, I'm looking forward to a time- Anyway, I'm looking forward to a time when we can afford something like this again. So, that's it for tonight. Thanks.
I vote yes. Ms. Barnes?
I have a couple of things, too. First, I also wanted to compliment all the teachers on the great beginnings, and very informative all the Back to School Nights. It was really interesting, and I wanted to say something especially to Jennifer Zanzo. She's here. Very, very excellent Spanish that she was speaking, so it was fun, fun to see her do it, do the presentation of the parents in both languages. So, bravo to her.
Thank you.
Oh, you are there. And secondly, I was tutoring, tutoring a student, a fifth grade student at Laurelwood, with a different company that doesn't work for us. And I, and anyway, she, she asked me to come and sit in on her, her conference, I mean, her Back to School Night, and I did, and it was really, really excellent to sit there as, as kind of a parent, so to speak. And it was with Eldridge and Bush. Talk about a team. Those women are outstanding teachers, so I want to put a kudos out to them, too, is what they're doing and what all of you are doing, and hearing what the curriculum is. And now, now she doesn't have a pass, I guess I know exactly what's going on. And, not the girls, but the tutor person. Anyway, and also, there's one other thing. Monterey County Reads and the Panetta Institute went on on Friday night, and most of the administrators were there. It was outstanding. I want to thank all the teachers, the volunteers, the principals for participating in our district, and we had such excellent representation that was really, really impressive, and that every time they named off the name, it was our school and the great awards that we got. And lastly, I also have some serious concerns about the combo classes. I think we have to ensure that we give support materials and aids to help the teachers with this rigorous curriculum. I know it's really, really tough. It's hard enough to have a combo class, but now it's especially difficult. So, thank you.
What did you do? You know, the visits, I, I want to share with my colleagues, as well as the administration, faculty, and neighbors from here, is that I did get a chance to visit Back to School Night in my schools, which is Gabi Van and Camat, and not only go there, but also visit, visit, talk to parents, talk to faculty, talk to the custodian, custodian, and, you know, people that work out to keep that place clean. It's coming along good, both schools, and both schools understand, I read the school plan as well, and they understand it's hardball, it's hardball academically. What I'm trying to do is encourage seniors in those neighborhoods and/or their parents, the parents of the children, to be more engaged. And I go door to door sometimes, and just introduce myself, but at the same time, ask them to be volunteers at the school. And of course, I'll do background check on them. We have to do that. Okay? Thank you very much. That was brief, but at the same time, we have another item that I don't foresee any previous concerns or, or questions. Say none? Okay. Next item is with the individuals desiring to address the board on items that are not on the agenda, as for the record. You may step up. If there's more than one person, please get your, get behind the speaker and then work your way up over here. We do have a notice. Everybody here at the table has this notice, but this is one of the greatest opportunities for making sure that not only our school structure supports the community, the community works with us. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, good evening. My name is Veronica La Peña. I am a committee member here. Work here, live here, work here, and I'm a part of the committee for Gista Familia, the Estas Menas. Number one, welcome, Superintendent. I'd like to give you a little bit of information about our committee here. We've had this, this Spanish-based workshop for Hispanic families. It is ran in Spanish. All the paperwork is in Spanish, and our, our people that do attend our workshops are both Spanish and English-speaking, but the workshops are ran in Spanish. So, basically, what it is, it's a parent, once again, parent conference designed for family members with children of special needs, and they're set up in workshops. This year, we're going to have 11 workshops. We work closely with Ms. Chaides, with Ms. Manceda. We are based at Baranda Meadows Elementary School, and we provide resources, is basically what we do, for the family members. I, myself, as the professional coordinator, invite our local resources to come and to be able to speak to the, to the parents. If the resources that we do have for the people that do come, they speak English, we always have a translator in the room for them. And we have social workers, we have doctors, lawyers that touch bases about social security for the children of special needs, immigration. We have also the chemicals in the atmosphere with chemicals that come and talk to the parents in regards to educating the parents. So, basically, what we do is we educate these, these Hispanic family members about what their local resources are and what, how they can use it to their advantage to better help their child with special needs. It is a day-long event. It is from 8:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon. We cordially invite all of you, of course, to come and, come with us, invite you to come. We serve continental breakfast, we also serve lunch, and also, we provide them with tote bags with information in there as well. And for this year, we have on our calendar note that it is going to be, as you can see on your paper, for October 10th there at Baranda Meadows School. And I kind of actually wanted to see if you guys had any questions. I know every year I've spoken about it, but this year, if there's any questions that you guys might have in regards to our organization, or how we, maybe some feedback that you've heard in regards to it, or...
During public comment, we don't...
Oh, you don't, you don't...
But, we can certainly communicate with you through email if we do have any feedback.
That would be great. Okay. So, I have a little bit more. Last year, we did have about 150 attendees. To let you know, this is our third year with the district, and we've also been acknowledged by our State Assembly, Mr. Luisa Michael, for our efforts and we're all volunteers. Some of them have, some of the members have children of special needs, which is, you know, their drive to better help our community. I, myself, have a special heart to be able to help our Hispanic family and our community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. You can stay as long as you want, but we do need to go to the next one, next item, which is consent agenda, or consent items. Consent agenda items. Do we have the public any comments or want to pull tonight? Our board members first? Say none, public, none?
I made the motion to approve the consent items.
Second? Okay, there's a motion on the floor, the second. Follow the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero. Okay, this item, number B, is under Curriculum, under informational items, and it's a single plan for achievement for Baranda Meadows, Los Padres, and Mission Park Schools. Okay? Please. Deportes. Thank you.
Thank you, and once again, good evening to everybody. I am Susana Manceda, the principal at Baranda Meadows Elementary School, and I thank you for giving me this opportunity, for sharing our school plan. Ms. Miranda will be getting...
The remote for you? Yes, sure will.
Thank you. Let me give it a try first, and it does work. So, I'm going to start off with our demographics here. We are a very diverse school. We have a very diverse student population, total enrollment of 789 students. And as you can see, our subgroups below, I've enumerated them. And one thing I would like to point out is that in each of our subgroups, we've shown an increase, some type of an increase percentage-wise for last year and this year. Next is our goal number one, academics. Our goals are school goals, one, two, and three are aligned with district goals. So, in terms of academics, I do want to highlight that we have funded a full-time intervention teacher. This is Chaides, and that has allowed for us to support more students at Baranda Meadows. We have, she offers a total of five sessions, so it's five classes. And while she's offering the intervention, she's also supporting the regular, regular ed teachers by minimizing the number of students in the classroom. So, that's one of the highlights under academics. And we also offer a dual immersion program, which promotes literacy. So, we have a K-6 strand now, goes all the way through sixth grade. Goal number two, school climate and culture. And right below the header is our school mantra, be respectful, make good choices, and solve problems. Two of the areas that I'd like to highlight are the school-wide rewards incentive plan that we have over on the, let me see if I know how to use this clicker here. Where's the red? Oh, you see the orange? That's our Baranda Meadows Golden Tickets. So, the Golden Tickets, which are very popular, and those are given out to students, for exemplifying the life skills of being respectful, making good choices, and solving problems. And the students get to cash in their Golden Tickets at a student store, which opens up on Fridays, every other Friday. We have a schedule calendar, so you're welcome to come to our student store. We also offer Jamba Juice and Starbucks cards. And below the Golden Ticket, you see the limo. That goes with the Accelerated Reader Incentive Plan. Last year, I briefly mentioned that some of our students got to ride a limo with me for being triple crown, triple, triple crown winners. We are a reading school or a reader's school. We're highly promoting Accelerated Reader, which is a district initiative, district initiative. So, the district does support the Accelerated Reader Program and helps us with that, but we promote at the side level, and we fund the incentive plan. Our goal number three, parent-community involvement. On the left-hand side, I have different types of committees, activities that parents are part of. One of the areas that I'd like to highlight is the sports program. Parents get very excited to go watch their students play. And I would also like to thank our teachers, because they are all volunteers. I have all volunteers who run our sports program, our year-long sports program. We offer volleyball, like football, basketball, co-ed, boys and girls, et cetera. But, teachers are very committed to ensuring parents and community involvement, very committed to doing that, as well as, we have a parent coordinator. When I first arrived at Baranda Meadows, we had a parent coordinator that was a three-hour employee. We've gone from three hours over the course of the last years, to now, this school year, having her five hours. And she is key in bridging the parent-community staff involvement. She is key. And one of the areas of focus for this year for her is attendance. That's a big one. Children on that school, they cannot learn, right? So, she will be focusing about five hours a week on attendance. I met with her today. We talked about our plan and how we're going to go about identifying students who need support related to attendance and the families, and how we're going to reach out and so forth. And to the left, I have the community partnerships that we've established, and as you can tell, we have a long list, an extensive list of that. I'm very happy to be working with them. Let me go back. And lastly, our vision statement, but I will not read the whole thing. I would like to highlight the highlighted words in trying to... We are a school that's committed, school, community, and staff that's committed to students, and we view them as a core of our community, and we provide opportunities, given that we are devoted to the success of all students. And we are respectful, and we promote being respectful, making good choices, and solving problems. Any questions?
Good. Thank you very much. Los Padres, you coming next?
Good evening, President Garcia, Superintendent Martinez, board members. It's a great honor for me to be here and speak to you. So, you look at this slide, our population of students has actually been increasing. Almost seems like every day, we're getting a child. It's incredible. Our number's up there, as far as the Latino and Hispanics, as you can see, are quite high, but we do have other students there. For our school plan goal number one, I'd like to highlight three areas. The Saturday Academy, NASA Seemont, collaboration that we have with Hartnell College. We run two of those during the fall and the spring. This fall, we're already set up to start on October 10th and focusing our students with the highest need. As a school and community there, with the support of the School Assembly Council, we've decided to pay for a full-time academic coach, so they can actually provide all that assistance that the teachers need in order for them to work hard with the new math curriculum, as well as everything else that goes with the new standards. And finally, with that, the science teacher, we're setting up, and we're pretty much, tomorrow, we're actually going to be getting with having the students come into the science classroom, going through the science lab rules, so that they can become familiar, and we'd be, hopefully, within the following week or so, we'll be done with that and get the students in doing some experiments. In goal number two, I'd like to highlight the Just Run. This activity, students, parents, families enjoy it so much. This last year, we actually took first place in participation, which meant that the school got $1,300 so that we could put back for the students. Also, we're hosting Yosai there at Los Padres, and we have a waiting list, so we're working very diligently, Ms. Vargas and I, to clear out another room so we can have more space, and they're working on getting more instructors to help out and clear out that waiting list. On the third goal, we, on the left-hand side, if you've noticed there, you've got the parents. We have, one of the biggest things is that teachers, primarily for the dual immersion programs, are leading parent trainings to give them strategies in how to help their children with their homework, particularly now that the mathematics is a new way of thinking. Also, we're going to continue with our family nights, literacy, science, and math, particularly in science, having the science teacher. We want to be able to compete in the county science fair. And again, on the right-hand side, you can see our community members. And as far as Los Padres, vision, mission is to provide a nurturing environment with academic excellence and quality instruction, so students become lifelong learners. And with that, I'm, do you have any questions?